I now call back to order the county board of commissioners meeting of March 7, 2023. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. We will proceed to the public hearing, starting with the auditors. P thirty-nine, continuance?
I have approved, Mr. Chair. Item P thirty-nine was published in the Tampa Times on January twenty-second, 2023. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Denise Turner, Ms. Planning and Development. P thirty-nine is ENA twenty-three zero 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 five. The item is a request to continue the item to the April fourth, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting at one-thirty in Dade City.
May I have a motion to continue P thirty-nine?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It has been probably moved and seconded. Next item, P forty. Clerk, will one else notice?
Item P forty was published in the Business Observer on February tenth, 2023, February seventeenth, 2023, February twenty-fourth, 2023, and March third, 2023.
P forty is PDD twenty-three zero one four one. This is an ordinance establishing the Harvest Hills Community Development District pursuant to Chapter one ninety Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for powers and rules of the district, providing for the board supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. We're asking that you adopt the item by rule call vote.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone in person or on WebEx signed up for this item?
I have no one signed up in person or in WebEx.
Okay. We'll conclude public comment. Motion from the board?
Nobody in the audience want to speak to it?
Anyone from the audience want to speak?
Is this the CDD?
So no one's signed up, no one's on, no one's on WebEx.
I move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Call the roll, please.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Aye. Now we proceed with the public hearings. Will the county attorney please review the procedures for rezoning?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas regarding consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that near public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria for rezoning found within the board's land development area.
Okay, those who are in person who wish to speak to any of the items on the public hearing agenda will be sworn in by the clerk now.
If you would, please stand if you're going to speak on any of the items and raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Today, we have four public hearing items on the consent agenda. We'll start with a withdraw on P forty-one.
P forty-one is PDD twenty-three zero two two four. This is a conditional use request in the name of Patricia Weber, Festmeyer, North American Towers LLC Earthcom Services. This is a request to withdraw the item and no further action is required.
Okay. Next item, P forty-two.
Item P forty-two was published in the Tampa Times on October nineteenth, 2022.
PDD twenty-three seven six six five in the name of Rama Investments LLC Apple Enterprises. This is a request to continue the item to the April fourth, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Dade City.
May I have a motion to continue P forty-two?
Move through.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's, so that's a motion to approve the continuance.
Well, to approve the continuance.
Motion to approve the continuance.
Second.
All in favor to continue, say aye. I think you're okay. Next item, P forty-three.
Item P forty-three was published in the Tampa Times on January fourth, 2023.
This is PDD twenty-three seven five four eight, a zoning amendment in the name of Harvest Hills North Villages of Pasadena Hills Master Planning and Development. It's formerly known as Harvest Hills. Level of Consulting LLC has proposed substantial modifications to previously approved MPUD to separate it into multiple smaller MPUDs and allow transfer of the following entitlements: seven hundred and ninety-eight residential dwelling units and one hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eleven square feet of non-residential uses on approximately three nineteen point three acres. On this item, there is a couple, a few corrections. In your background summary alternative analysis, the location of the project should be on the north side of Prospect Road at the intersection of Prospect Road and the Hamcart Road. Additionally, the parcel identification numbers that were provided were actually for Harvest Hills South. So the corrected parcel ID numbers, and this will all be provided to the clerk's office, I'm going to read them into record, are thirteen dash twenty-five dash twenty dash zero 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 dash zero zero one zero zero dash zero 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 zero, comma, eighteen dash twenty-five twenty-one dash zero 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 dash zero zero one zero zero dash zero 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 zero, comma, eighteen dash twenty-five dash twenty-one zero 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 three zero 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 zero, and eighteen dash twenty-five dash twenty-one dash zero 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 dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero 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 zero. Again, that will be provided to the clerk's office as a correction. And the request is to find, to approve it with conditions as included in your packet. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee, who met on one eighteen twenty-three, and the Planning and Development Department.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this item?
I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, we leave it on consent?
Commissioner Mariano?
Mr. Starkey?
Two questions. One is for Mr. Pito's. If I was going to bring up our discussion yesterday of the TND ordinance, which one of these numbers is the best one for me to bring it up? They're all on bringing up ones.
Mr. Pito's Planning and Development, you're referring to the, to the Harvest Hills?
Yes, because there's three, three of them, right?
Yeah, they're associated with each other. Being if they were, yeah, the Harvest Hills Commons is geographically separate from the north and south MPUDs, but they're all basically in the same club.
Well, should I?
Yeah, it doesn't really, you can address it to either, all of them.
Well, it's a statement in general, but I want to, because we have sunshine, I need to discuss things very quickly with the board. So, so I mean, I want to pull one of them off for discussion, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, is, is the item, are any of these TND? Or are they all TND?
Well, that's, no one's following that ordinance. Okay, I want to pull this one off for discussion, taking off consent. I'll do this one.
Okay, we're pulling P forty-three?
Pulling forty-three, now we'll go to item P forty-four.
So, sorry.
Publication?
Item P forty-four was published in Tampa Times on January fourth, 2023. Thank you.
P forty-four is PDD twenty-three seven six zero four. It's Harvest Hills South Villages of Pasadena Hills Master Planning and Development, formerly known as Harvest Hills Level of Consulting LLC. Substantial modification to a previously approved Master Planning and Development District to separate it into multiple smaller MPUDs and allow for a transfer of the entitlements as follows: seven hundred and fifty-nine residential dwelling units and one hundred and one hundred and two thousand seventy-three square feet of non-residential on approximately one hundred and sixteen point three acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee, who met on one eighteen of twenty-three, and the Planning and Development Department, and the conditions are as included in your agenda packet.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this item? See no one, no one, we'll leave it on consent?
And I have no one signed up or on WebEx for this item.
Okay, thank you. Next item, P forty-five.
Item P forty-five was published in the Tampa Times on January fourth, 2023.
This is PDD twenty-three seven six zero five. It's a zoning amendment, Harvest Hills Commons Villages of Pasadena Hills Master Planning and Development Level of Consulting LLC. It's a substantial modification to reduce the number of entitlements from four hundred and seventy dwelling units to two hundred and seventy-six dwelling units. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet for the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee, who met on one eighteen of twenty-three, and the Planning and Development Department.
Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone on WebEx?
There is no one on WebEx for this item.
You know, I think my question's important. Of these forty-foot lots, I don't know. I just wondered, and you're pleased to just...
You want to pull it, we can pull it.
Yeah, let's, I just want to talk about these.
So what did you do with that one?
So for clarification, we're pulling P forty-three, P forty-four, and P forty-five?
Yeah, thank you.
For discussion?
Okay, so the last, last one on consent is P forty-six?
Item P forty-six was published in Tampa Times on November twenty-third, 2023.
This is PDD twenty-three seven six seven eight. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Margie A. Tingling. It's for a zoning, for a change in zoning from C-three Commercial Light Manufacturing District with a specific use for data processing to a C-two General Commercial District. This, there is a correction on this item. In your references section, it incorrectly lists, lists the BCC date as two twenty-one of twenty-three, and it was actually two seven of twenty-three. That correction has been submitted to board records. The applicant on this item has also voluntarily agreed to a date restriction, which is included in your agenda packet, but shortly is to have a minimum of ten thousand square feet of office uses prohibiting car washes, gas stations, drive-through restaurants, and standalone RV and boat storage, to allow self-storage facilities, provided that they're set back a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet from the state road fifty-two right-of-way, and not allow RV and boat storage as part of the self-storage facility, and to also stub out the property to the west. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Pasadena, the Pasco County Planning Commissioners.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this item?
I have no one signed up for this item and no one on WebEx.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, if I can ask the commissioner, so do you intend to modify forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five, or do you just wish to have a discussion?
I, I want to be sure we're not tying our hands on something that the builder, developer may want to do.
So I would let the commissioner have her discussion on those items, and they may maybe able to go back on consent from one of you.
Yeah. I just want to be sure, because I'm looking at the diagram that's presented here, and so, so I would move to approve that.
Just let her discussion.
Oh, now?
Now.
Oh, okay. So I guess, I don't know if I'm Joel or Terry, but so the, you know, we have a TND ordinance for new board members. TND is traditional neighborhood development. It builds walkable communities and it typically has the rear-loaded houses. And, you know, we, we went with the forty-foot lots. If you want to have X amount, you got to put the, you got to rear-load it, push the house up front and put the parking in the back, and then you don't have that parking issue on the sidewalk, and it makes for a much nicer neighborhood. I know that VOPH has been exempted from the TND ordinance, but I'll tell you, our TND ordinance is really bad. Even my brother-in-law is a TND national specialist, would never use it. And no, I don't think we've really had any takers, because it's very onerous and expensive the way we put the rules in and what our requirements are. I don't think our administrator knew this until yesterday, so I know we're going to work on fixing a lot of those elements so that it makes it better, a better product. My, my understanding is, is that this developer is interested in bringing in some of those elements to his developments, his villages, and, you know, you need density around a village center to help all the commercial retail be successful. But when I, when I looked here, and I didn't notice this before, I'm seeing, if you look on page, you guys have the, do you have it in front of you?
No, we don't have that.
Uh, okay, if you put forty-three, I don't know what page this is, this page. If you can put that up there, it shows the typical layout for the forty-foot lots, and it's, it's the standard, it's a twenty-foot side, twenty-foot driveway in the front, fifteen feet in the back, for single-family detached. Are we, are we, if we pass this like this, does he have to do that, or can we modify that for a rear-loaded product?
Let me, let me take a stab at all that and briefly summarize it. First, as you pointed out, Joel, to Land Use Consultant for the applicant, as you pointed out, VOPH has always been treated differently because it is a specific special planning area with specific design guidelines and requirements that frankly are above and beyond what the rest of the county has. So it already has its design structure to ensure that you have these concentric villages that are more dense in the center, and then the density reduces as you go to the edge of the village, so that there, and there's even an open space buffer area between villages where there's no, no housing development. Two updates ago, approved by the board, by this board, you're correct that the TND requirement was, was expressly eliminated from VOPH for all the reasons you gave. So as we sit here today, there is no mandatory TND requirement, but there are still these comprehensive plan guidelines as to how these villages are to be designed. The entitlements that are in these three MPUDs are not new entitlements. These were all approved ten years ago. So this particular applicant is not asking for any new entitlements. All they have done is break this massive MPUD into three distinct geographic areas and allocate the existing approvals to those areas. So this is nothing new. VOPH, when you, and this is the last step, is last summer, when we worked out your initial effort to control design of forty-foot lots, and that was negotiated with the Builders Association, we expressly agreed to exclude VOPH from that for three reasons. One, it already has its very specialized design criteria. Number two, we did agree, we did agree to apply the architectural controls, the monotony controls, the on-street parking controls. We did voluntarily agree to apply those. So one thing that these three MPUDs do, which they did not have originally, is this applicant has voluntarily added those architectural monotony controls and parking controls into these three. So you are getting those by him doing the update. Now, here's what, here's what Mr. Galvin, this applicant, has agreed with staff to do. In fact, it was his idea. He suggested that since he's likely to be the very first one in a major way to kick off these projects in VOPH, he actually suggested that his design team have a planning, a design charrette with staff, which any one of you, it'll be a workshop, any one of you will be welcome to attend, but he wants to sit down and work on the concepts for, okay, how do these guiding principles apply? When we start laying out these village centers, and we start laying out these projects, what are the streetscapes, how are things configured, and how does this work? So he has pledged to do that and wants to do that. So I guess my point is, they have the right to use forty-foot lots. This board has previously, you know, reaffirmed that as late as last summer, but it comes with the strings attached that you've got to have these design controls. So the short answer is, he's happy to have that design charrette, have staff and commission input in that, and work out an agreed approach on these plans. But no one is going to commit to TND, you know that. But if there's a modified version of that, if a product can be designed that makes sense that the developer can afford to build and that helps facilitate these village centers, he's happy to work on those concepts with staff, and frankly, will be the leader out there in doing so.
Yeah.
Which will then establish a standard, if you will.
So when you talk about parking restrictions, are you talking about the length of the driveway, or what else are you talking about?
Well, I think everything's on the table. The part we've already agreed to is the condition, the standard condition, that I think Commissioner Oakley initiated and staff worked out with the regulation of on-street parking that basically requires the HOAs to control and enforce that so that the people aren't parking there and that the cars are not across sidewalks. But yes, the short answer is, a big part of the problem is making sure those driveway lengths are sufficient, that people aren't parked across sidewalks and aren't parked into the streets. But all those things, they're happy to discuss that.
Mr. Two, you have in show one, correct?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
So, so, you know, I, I wish we hadn't gotten rid of the TND, but I'm telling you, our TND ordinance was really bad. I, I hear we might have a pretty progressive developer here, which I'm excited about. He's doing a charrette. I would encourage us to attend. This is the first real, I think, village that's coming in, is that right?
Yeah, it'll be, under, under the real original concept, this will be the first meaningful development of VOPH that actually gets launched. And by the way, the same developer is the same one that's going to be building all those utilities and roadways under the other agreements we've approved in the last two months.
So one of the, in discussions yesterday with administrator and planner, Terry, you know, some of the thoughts that we've had, and I don't know if these already apply to VOPH, I can't remember, is to incentivize the rear-loaded product where you, where the parking goes in the back, and then you have on-street parking. You get a lot more parking in a community that way. But one of the discussions we've had, and I've had it with you on Newport Corners, is the ability to add what's called an accessory dwelling unit in the back. We have been long leaf all over the place. Some of our county attorneys rented some, where you get a little granny flat or mother-in-law suite or something, and we wouldn't count it as the, towards density wave impact fees because it's considered workforce housing, and, you know, we're working on, and I really want the developer to hear this, working on these incentives to entice a better community than, if you can picture streets and streets and streets of forty-foot lots with garage and door in the front and parking, you know, if you have a single-car garage, you're going to only be able to fit one car unless you're using the garage, and I haven't, it's hard to find a person that, a family that only has the one car. So, so picture rows and rows of that versus the rear-loaded product, which is, in my mind, so much better. And I also would hope that streets would be broken up with quadruplexes and different varieties of products, so it's not a monotonous, you know, Southern California look of rows and rows of the same house, but it's painted a different color with a different color garage door. So I'm just really hopeful that what we've done at VOPH becomes something really special. And by taking out some of the stuff that we did last year, which I understand why we did it, it was not a good ordinance, we shot ourselves a little bit in the foot, and I'm hoping we can use it current to get some of this good product back in. So that's all I wanted to say.
And we agree that that's a good approach.
I just want to add to it, we had talked about it, I was living my life...
I just want to add to, we had talked about it, I was living, I was building my new home. I was living in a 50-foot lot position and people park on both sides of the road. If you've got a 20-foot road, that doesn't leave but room from one vehicle lane to go through there. I had somebody, I was moving out of my house last week and I had someone coming toward me. There was nowhere for me to pull over to let them by. They had to pull over and let me get by before they could come down the road. And if that, this product's going to end up like that, then we really don't want that in our county. So I mean, so if you're not having any street parking, that's great. But are you putting in extra parking somewhere for some of these people? Because they're going to have more than, some of them will have more than two cars.
And that's exactly, those issues are exactly what Mr. Galvin wants to work through in the design charrette. Because we agree, that flexibility in product, particularly to get a little unique in the village centers, that's how you can create the village center look that you've always wanted without then requiring the density as you fan out, you know, from the village centers. So we have no disagreement over any of these design concepts. And he's happy to participate in that design process and have a charrette on it.
And these houses are for sale, right?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we're just for, I don't know who Mr. Galvin is back there, but which one's Mr. Galvin? We are working on making the alleys cheaper too and, you know, more realistically priced because I know that's part of the issues that have been there for a traditional neighborhood development in this county is what we've been acquiring them to build since we are builders of TND.
Less expensive to construct?
Yeah. Did I say it wrong?
You said cheaper.
Oh, less expensive.
We are premier, so it's less expensive.
Yes, a premier, cheaper driveway that our fire marshal is not going to object to. But, so we know we have, we know we have work to do, but I just want you to know, we'd like to work with them to achieve something like what it was originally intended to be.
And they're happy, they're happy to try to work with you so they set that standard and they do create, it is a unique opportunity since they're the first ones out of the box of any, you know, material magnitude.
So let me go back to my question, and you guys see it here on the screen, and Joel, it's up there, the diagram that's in here.
I mean, that is intended simply to depict as your code requires. We have to acknowledge that for each lot width, we acknowledge what the setback requirements are. That's directly from the Land Development Code. So that applies in any case, but that doesn't tell you how the subdivision's going to be laid out. You're going to get those plans. Those plans are going to have to come in and they're going to have to meet the design requirements of the VOPH code. This is just an example that for a 40-foot lot, this is the maximum building footprint that can be on there and still comply with your setbacks. So I mean, that's just a generic loophole.
Okay. So if our applicant did want to do a rear-loaded product, he's not held to this?
No.
He doesn't have to come in here to change anything?
Correct.
That's what I want to make sure.
Now, I can't imagine, I can't imagine staff would make you amend the zoning to do that. I mean, if they apply, if they approve.
Or whatever comes in.
Right.
I just didn't want to be stuck with that.
We don't want to have to be amending zonings either to.
Because I can tell you, I believe, yeah, I believe this commission doesn't want a county full of that.
These are the quote "minimum standards," so you can always do more. Now, you know, one thing you have to do is you have to allow those accessory dwelling units, which, you know, we have in Connected City, you know, to an extent. But that's something that, you know, you probably need to address.
So is that not addressed in VOPH? Because we did it in Newport Corners.
To my knowledge, that has not been specifically addressed in VOPH, but it's also not prohibited at VOPH.
Okay, well, I mean, I think we want that.
So I mean, if that's a product you want, that's something, that would be a great topic for the design charrette, to be honest with you.
Something else, with the design charrette, I've heard about the fire truck lanes coming in, coming out, so we could look at that too.
Exactly. That's the issue with the rear-loaded alleys.
So this may be the ultimate time to actually make these changes that we need to do to adjust it, to adjust the code, to make it easier to have a great development. Because I do like the rear-loaded project. It does look much, much better.
And I think that would be Mr. Galvin's goal. What we would hope for is that the, coming out of the design charrette would be some type of policy memorandum that PDD adopted for VOPH and that the board obviously has to approve. And that these would be, if you will, kind of design guidelines, which you clearly have the power, you know, to adopt. And that's part of the trick, is we got to get the fire marshal and everyone else on the same page.
How much time do you think we need for the charrette?
There's not much time.
How much time do you think we need with the charrette workshop?
A charrette needs to be a, you know, half-day process, a two- or three-hour process.
I think it's worthwhile. Okay. All right. Any more discussion on these items?
Nope, I would move to approve.
Yeah.
So.
Publicly.
Let me just go back to line. Let me just go back on.
Yeah.
By one?
That works.
All right, so item P43, is there anyone here to speak against this item?
I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx.
Okay. P44, is there anyone here to speak to this item?
I have no one signed up in person and no one on WebEx.
We have that on consent. And P45, is there anyone here to speak to this item?
I have no one signed up in person and no one on WebEx.
Okay. All right, so that will be the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Consent agenda.
Have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Good discussion. P47.
Item P47 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January 29th, 2023, and February 5th, 2023.
Good afternoon, Heather Wolf, Rural Property and Planning Division. Petitioners for this item have requested a continuance to the April 4th board meeting here in Dade City at 1:30.
This was scheduled for action today, so if you, you may want to call and see whether there's anybody in the audience who cannot make the continuance date.
Is anyone here that wants to speak to this item and can't make it on the continuance date?
This is P47, vacation.
I have no one signed up for P47 and no one on WebEx for P47.
Okay. Does the motion continue then?
So move.
Move to the continuance to date in time certain?
Yes.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bradford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item P48.
Item P48 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January 18th, 2023.
Believe Divine Planning and Development. Item P48, PDD 23-7686, in the name of Oakley Junction AG LLC slash Oakley Junction, is a zoning amendment from AC Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial District. The subject site is located on the northeast corner of Oakley Boulevard and Old Pasco Road. This is a look at the aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the north is rez 3, rez 6, and mixed-use. To the south and east is mixed-use, and then to the west is rez 6 and mixed-use. The surrounding zoning for the site, to the north is AC, AR, R1, and MF2. To the east is AR, to the south is AC, and to the west is AC and R1. The subject site is currently undeveloped on approximately 1.98 acres. The applicant proposes to develop the property in conformance with C2 General Commercial District standards for development. The applicant has volunteered a deed restriction, which will limit the maximum square footage for commercial slash retail uses on the property to 22,000 square feet. Access to the property is from Old Pasco Road, a county-maintained collector road with approximately 130 feet of right-of-way, and Oakley Boulevard, a county-maintained local road with approximately 90 feet of right-of-way. And the future land use for the property is mixed-use under the comprehensive plan. This is coming with a recommendation for approval from Planning Commission and Planning Development Department. I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Anyone from the public like to speak to this item?
I do have one person signed up. I do not have their name.
All right, so from the applicant?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34652. Representing the applicant, pretty straightforward. We're sitting at the corner of Old Pasco Road and Oakley Boulevard in a mixed-use land use, your most intense and dense land use. So this is where, pursuant to your locational criteria in your comprehensive plan, this is where commercial locates along these types of roads in this location. So I think staff did a very good job of going through the application and we're here to answer questions. I have my client and our traffic engineer. Let's see what the public comment is and we can address from there. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, so is this a public hearing?
Yep, I had one person signed up. They didn't provide their name. The organization is Faith Baptist Church and street address is Smoke Tree Lane, I believe? Okay. If you could state your name and address and then whether or not you've been sworn.
Yes, I'm Sean Harhold, 35059 Smoke Tree Lane. That's in Dade City, 33523. And yes, I've been sworn in.
Thank you. You may proceed.
All righty, so we do have a few concerns. I'm the school administrator of the property, just alongside of the two lots, the two parcels in question here. And in our opinion, Oakley Boulevard is not ready for an increase in traffic, especially not right in front of our school there, right in front of our church and our school. We would be concerned for the safety of our students. We think having a general commercial lot right here on this land with access to Oakley Boulevard is kind of troublesome for the traffic. And in conjunction with the traffic concern, we would have a concern with specific high traffic businesses that drive people there, businesses or restaurants with drive-throughs, gas stations, or even trailer parks could seriously raise traffic and safety concerns right in front of our school. Also, added foot traffic is a concern. We seem to have enough people wandering aimlessly around or near or on our property and our school property. And so we'd just be concerned with any type of business that may draw more of that particular kind of individual near the vicinity of our school. And so I just wanted to make our concerns public and state them for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public like to speak to this item?
And I have no one signed up on WebEx for this item.
Okay. Back to the applicant?
Thank you. We did go through a traffic review in connection with the rezoning and we meet all of your criteria. Mike Razor can discuss that more if you have any specific questions. We have to go through access management review. At the time of site plan, we know what the use is. We're at the zoning stage now. And there is, appears to be a wetland in between our property lines, where this property line is, and then moving towards the east of where the school facility is. And it's wooded there now. We don't intend on drawing individuals in. And it is a good location for commercial. It's exactly what your code says, and we'll be good neighbors.
Any questions for the applicant? Someone want to make a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five votes. Okay, P49.
Item P49 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January 18th, 2023.
Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. P49 is PDD 237687. This is a zoning amendment in the name of Global Broker Group LLC and Alma Associates LLC. It's for a change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to an R4 High-Density Residential District. On March 1st, we received a request from the applicant's representative to continue the item to the May 9th, 2023 Board County Commissioners Meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. I understand there's some folks in opposition here on the item, so you may want to call for.
So let me have the county attorney explain the procedures. When we have a continuance that's recorded ahead of time and shown, it's permissible to do that instantly. When we have people that show up for one that's been, that's been requested be continued, we have a different procedure. So, Mr. County Attorney?
Since this was advertised for approval, if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak that cannot come back on May 9th, they can speak now. But if you speak now, you won't be able to speak on May 9th. You only get one shot. So that's up, that's up to you.
And if we continue it, nothing happens, it just gets continued to May 9th?
Right. The full hearing will be on May 9th.
Okay, so does anyone want to speak to this item? And no one on WebEx?
No one on WebEx. And I don't have anyone else signed up, but that gentleman.
So you want to come forward and speak, sir? Yes. Now, keep in mind, if you speak today, you won't be able to speak when we have the public hearing that's being continued to May 9th. If you just wait, you'll be able to speak at that hearing when we have it. Because we don't make any decisions on it today, we're just continuing it. May 9th, yes. So we're going to make that, I expect that motion will happen soon.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't have anyone else signed up in person or on WebEx.
Okay. And no one else has come forward, so Denise, we need a motion till, till what day?
May 9th at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Move to continue.
Second.
Let's move to continue, time certain, to May 9th at 1:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that is our agenda. Thank you very much for agenda.
Can we adjourn?
Well, we already did everything.
You did? I just want to talk about the 40-foot lots.
Okay. We'll draw discussion.
I mean, let them all go. Just.
But you can sign while I'm going through.
So just for the new commissioners and maybe the property analyst, I don't know if you'd be able to. Well, Commissioner Bradford lives in a neighborhood that has rear-loaded. The best. Yes. Starkey Ranch has rear-loaded product. Asturias, David Weekly Homes, rear-loaded. So just so you can get a feel for what we're talking about, and Longleaf, of course. Because, because, you know, people would call, Longleaf is a TND neighborhood, traditional neighborhood development, which is the old style of design, the old style, like old Northeast and downtown Tampa and, you know, fully where they had alleys and all that kind of stuff. When you have, and not just Liam or someone else, maybe it would explain it better than me that's a planner, but our architect, what we call in Starkey Ranch and Bexley and Asturias is TND light, is kind of the term that our family uses. But I think you can get a real sense for the difference between what a front-loaded 40-foot lot community looks like and a rear-loaded and how it handles the parking and all those issues if you would drive through some of those neighborhoods. I don't know of any on the east side, and maybe staff knows some, where there's some rear-loaded.
I'm not aware of any on the east side.
There's none? Okay. And I know that because of some of the restrictions that I don't feel are necessary on what we've done in the back with the alleys, we've added a lot more class to them and makes it unattractive for our development community. So I just wanted to encourage you to, to experience what we're talking about so we all become a little more knowledgeable. Because for me, rows and rows and roads and roads on the east side full of front-loaded 40-foot lots is not a vision that I had thought we would have when we did VOPH.
If I understood them right when they were talking about the 40-foot lots, they had 20-foot in the front, right?
They have a 20-foot driveway, which really fits one, one car, one F10 pickup, right?
Okay.
I went and practiced when I grew up around.
No, I thought it was 20-foot from the sidewalk to the house.
Yeah. It fits one.
The setback that you, that you saw.
Right.
That was attached to that, the typical section, had a 20-foot setback to the front of the house, a 25-foot setback to the garage.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Well.
That's only, that's only.
Still one car.
800 feet? 800 square feet in front yard? In the backyard, I thought they said they had 40 by 15.
15 feet. The setback from the property line is 15 feet.
600.
And it's 5 foot from the property line on the side.
That's all we have in the backyard of these places, 600 feet.
I personally think we should discuss 5-foot setbacks and consider something a little bigger like we used to have. Because where are you putting your air conditioner and everything and your pool equipment?
Take away from all that.
By the time you put that in, you can't even put a fence because you can't, you have to go over it, you know? So then there's issues with the rain coming out the roofs and it makes this gutter, this yard thing where grass won't grow because all the water's coming down. So I'm not sure, and certain kind of product that we want.
Right.
That 5 foot should be the minimum.
You know, I've seen a few of the new ones. When one was off with Stereo Loop, I think it was Alden, maybe. It looked lousy. Saw another one, KB Homes over on Shady Hills Road, just super tight, cars parked Saw another one, KB Homes over on Shady Hills Road, just super tight, cars parked in the sidewalk, on the street. And looking at the one in Starkey, it looks awesome, the way it's set up. And the front yard's right there, you can actually go from your front yard to the walkway and get on the trail and go. And everybody's parked in the back. So whatever the hindrances are, let's go take a look at them, find a way to make it work, because I think if we can end up with that end product, it is a lot better.
You know, I just met with Lennar yesterday, and they said they build that kind of product in other counties, but they don't build it in ours, so.
Did you have staff, did you have staff with you in that meeting?
Yeah.
Who'd you have? All right, so Terry, I've got a meeting coming up with them too. I'd like to include you in it, because I want to have the same type of dialogue from you. All right. So Mike, as quick as we can get that set, let's, let's make it happen. It's an important, important adventure for us. All right, any else come before the board? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.